Biloxi City Council Meeting of April 28, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Do we have any proposed changes? We do. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? I got a movement by, excuse me, a motion to suspend the rules to amend the agenda. Motion by Felix Guy, seconded by George Lawrence. Will you read the additions?
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5L. Resolution rescinding resolution number 239-20, authorizing a build grant. Also, we're adding item 5M, resolution authorizing submittal of a build grant. We're also adding item 5N, resolution approving payment of final pay application for a DCD construction. To our routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of $1,370,938.74.
Do we have any discussion on the additions? There being none?
I move it as amended.
I have a motion by George Lawrence to accept the agenda as amended. Do I have a second? Seconded by Nathan Barrett. All of them in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Move to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, that's where to start. You know, we ended the emergency personnel mode this week, so everybody's, you know, all the team is back in the field and in the ballgame. And so, you know, to report, I think we probably said this before, but of the 600-plus employees, I think 11 were tested positive within the city of Biloxi, and that's a, and all of them are back at work. So, that's pretty good accomplishment. I think all the directors are in, you know, on board and asking those questions, if you have any of the symptoms and have issues, what you think, you know, just go home, isolate yourself till we determine that, you know, you're okay to come back to work, or you feel that you're okay to come back to work. I think we've, there's some avenues to go with testing, so that can, that confirmation can take place. But I think it was, you know, pretty amazing where we are and what we've done internally. And of course, the governor has kind of changed the ballgame a little bit, but again, we still have local authorities, so whatever, we can be more stringent than he is. But, you know, our intent is to open this place up again with certain, you know, controls and some gauges that will keep, you know, things on the right trajectory. Speaking of the right trajectory, I think where we are with Harrison County, I believe that the governor will be giving us opportunity by county or even by city to loosen up and go forward. I think some of the council was with us when we talked to Harrison County people in the barber shop today. Yesterday, we met with the Terry Powell from the mall and some of those retail considerations. I don't know if you were there yesterday, but then today, we met with the restaurants. And so, we're having at least industry by industry, a set of rules and guidelines that I think that would be reasonable to those people in the industry and to the visitors and customers of these types of businesses. We, of course, I think we're going to follow up with churches and barber shops and medical, the industry, but we're trying to attack that industry by industry with a common set of things that they will be doing and go forward from there. I backed up to the trajectory again for Harrison County, looking back from the 13th and trying to average this 14-day period, a downward trajectory. Well, looking at these numbers for Harrison County, at the end of 17th of April, which is about three days into this 14-day period, the average new positives were 5.3. Then you stretch that out to another few days to April 20th, the trajectory was four, the average new cases per day was 4.0. Take it up another few days to April 24th, actually 25th, it was 3.2 new positives a day. Today, as of the 28th, that average went down to 3.2 positives per day. So, that trajectory, it went from a 5.3 down to 3.2. So, I think we'll have the numbers ready to present to the governor and say, hey, we're on the right trajectory. Our health system is not overwhelmed. There's no problem with, you know, beds or ventilators or being, you know, in a jackpot. The thing that, you know, the president's plan was emphasized, both in every case, contact tracing. And we had a little, a few comments from everyone about how we can do that. The whole opportunity I think we have for Biloxi is to do this, roll it out in a phased approach, like turning the dimmer up a little bit, so we can go forward with each one of the sectors of our economy. You know, our focus needs to be getting back to business and start generating some revenue that we, you know, just went away for no fault of our own. We will next meet with the casinos and using some of their guidance, I think they pitched both to the gaming commission as well as the industries. Our casinos, for the most part, are governed by their corporate folks. And so, we'll make an effort to meet with them at this week, so we can figure out where we could go. The bottom line is, I think we have that downward trend in new cases per day. We have the conditions of not being overwhelmed. We have the PPE and necessary to go forward. The big thing that I think I shared today with the mayors on the teleconference was that, you know, if an outbreak happens, we have a mechanism to isolate that, do the cross referencing, and pull those folks out of the mix, and so we can go forward. Gives you the ability to not to shut the whole industry down, to shut the place where the outbreak took place, the hotspot took place. I'm going to have a conversation with some folks from Mississippi Department of Health with regard to contact tracing. The governor of Louisiana, they answered, or hired 75 contact tracers. So, that's heavy on everyone. I don't know what our governor's going to do, but that's the subject I'll be discussing with his health department staff to figure out what we're going to do. I think we can be proactive, you know, in saying, hey, this is what we want to do. We want to open up, you know, of course, the churches as well as, but in a safe manner, in a manner that we don't have to step backwards. We don't want to give up the ground that we've already made, you know, the hits and the sacrifices. 99% of the folks were very cooperative and understood where we were. But now, you know, we need to go forward, but in a wise manner, and I think that's what we're doing. The 1% is still going to be a problem. I don't care, but anyway, that no one gets more upset about that 1% who choose to do things, for whatever rhyme or reason. We're upset, and we talked a little bit in, I think, the first meeting, what teeth can we put into whatever we want to do as a city to say, we're not going to take that? You know, I think Mayor Farr talked about his experience this weekend. You know, you give them an inch, they take more than a mile. And that's, that's an issue of my part, you know. His police had to shut half of his downtown area down because they chose to, you know, to go around it. It's what we don't want. We want, you know, we have a lot of opportunities, a lot of outdoor dining, a lot of things that can be done if everybody just cooperates. So, that's where I'm coming from. You know, will, are we going to take a hit? No question about that. We, you know, had a little bit of March numbers. The March numbers were going to be great. We only did half the business, but the April will tell the tale. And then, you know, if, you know, as I understand where casinos are going, just like what Las Vegas has talked about, they're probably going to be only 40% at, you know, 40% strength as far as footprint, slot machines, people, visitors. So, I mean, we probably could be in a similar situation between now and October or November. I don't know. But, you know, my emphasis right now is to get this city going again, get, you know, getting that need to be normal, and I think that's what we're trying to do. Mike, have I forgotten anything?
Got it. You got it, Mayor. We are ready. The numbers are supporting our opening up business. We have a plan, and all that's been passed to the governor, so we'll wait his direction.
That concludes my report. Any questions?
Do you have a question?
Do you actually have a date when you're going to try to open?
Nope.
Now, it's time.
Well, it's time. I think next week sometime, we would turn the light on.
Listen, he'll open up tomorrow, the next day, the next day, it's not going to make any difference. It's time to open it up. You're still going to go through the same problem as your first open up anything. So, it's time, isn't it, waiting?
Well, first of all, let me say this, we've got to get the governor's permission to open up the restaurants. That's a big thing. You tell me what other sectors would you want to open up? Of course, churches and restaurants. People want to go out. People want to do something. But we cannot do, the governor says, no can do, no indoor dining, unless we have a plan. That's the plan we're trying to propose to him, and we'll hopefully be in a leading position to be able to execute that. So, over the next day or so, we're going to see, hey, Governor, why don't you loosen this up for Biloxi?
Yeah, it might not be you want to open up the restaurants, because there's a lot of other businesses you can open. Those things create tax money just like anything else, and people are going to start moving around, whatever it might be.
Yep.
You know, it don't have to be the rest of the 100%, whatever. It's just it's time to start doing something, let these people. Sunday, I rode the beach Sunday.
We're on the same page.
That's probably the biggest crowd I've seen on the beach, and I couldn't tell you when. These people want something to do. They want to get out.
And a lot of them are doing that. You know, what about this Jeep? You know, I've heard a lot of, you know, Facebook chatter about this Jeep thing that was done. They had a parade of Jeeps that messed, anyway. You know, I understand that people want to do things, but we got to have a plan that will keep bad things from happening as this stuff rolls out, and that's my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question, and it's may, I don't know who to address this to, and it may be better suited for after the meeting, but the chart that you showed to present the new cases, there seems to be some, actually, it looks like an apparent sequence in there. You have a day one with none, another day with one, then another day with five, and it goes from zero one day to seven one day, zero, then six. Why are we getting spikes?
Well, that's from a mathematical, it's not a spike, because the testing comes up in certain cycles.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Bart, you could prove anything with charts, okay?
Well, I'm asking, there's a reason why every three days, we have a large number versus the prior two.
More testing comes through. You know, the CDC takes test, like, what was that, 14,000 or 15,000?
Those through reporting cycle.
So, I mean, the only thing you can judge is the day, the number of positives from one day to the other and divided by the number of days. So, you add up all the new positives, that's day by day, and what is the course of 14 days? And that's where I said, we went from 5.3 to 3.2. The last three days was, it's a 3.4. You know, mathematically, it's the new cases per day. That's what you're looking at. Are the new cases per day going down or going up?
Understand, we don't have the ability to manipulate this data. It comes from.
No. That's cases in Harrison County.
From Department of Health.
I didn't know if you got an, if you were given guidance on how they were accumulating these numbers, how they were deriving them, because I don't know what the days are, but I'll say on the 19th, 0, 21, 21, 6, 22, 0, 23, 2, 24, 5, 25, 1, 26, 0, 27, 1, 28, 7. So, you see, it's like, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, but mathematically, that doesn't mean anything. It's the number of new cases per day. Over the course of time, that's the average, and that's what I'm saying. It went from about 5.3 per day, even that takes care of the zero one day and a high point the next day.
Look, I understand averages and means and mean values. I get that, but I was just wondering why there's, why the number coming back?
The amount of testing that's going on is the, you know, you got more testing one day, reported one day than the other. So, that's, I mean, that's the difference, you know, while you get the spike, more testing comes through.
I would think the reason for that is because you have these pop-ups areas, they run a bunch of tests, and then it takes a day or so to get those back. And that's probably all those from when those drive-through deals are getting reported on the same day is probably why.
That would make sense. That's what I was wondering, why? You know, why it's low, low, high, low, high, low.
There's one out, there's one out in Woolmarket today, and I was out there earlier. There's actually just a handful of people that went through there the whole day, and so.
The people that are feeding us this data, remember, they purposely use the term trajectory as the measure, not the spikes, not the ups and downs, but in what direction is the pattern going?
Well, I understand trend lines and how to generate trend lines, and you take your mean value for a certain period, and you develop which way is going. I get that, but I was just looking at the daily numbers and wondering why we, every three days, we have more than, that makes sense, what Mr. Barrett presented would account for that. I have no further questions. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I just.
Go ahead.
Ms. Newman, if anyone recognizes Newman.
I just find that it seems like everyone's confused of what's going on right now. They keep hearing that we want to reopen, so they're taking that and running with it. So, I keep hearing rumors that, oh, my gym's opening on Friday, oh, the salons can open softly. I mean, everyone is just, there's so many rumors flying around. We need to be more direct of what is going on right now. Is the curfew still in place? You know, all this stuff.
If you were closed because of not being essential, you still close officially. Some people have taken off and already done some things. You know, again, the governor says, no gyms, no bars, no indoor eating. No, that's what the governor says. We can be more stringent in trying to get more, you know, get things in a more business-like situation. We need to ask permission to say, this is what we want to do because we have a plan for restaurants. We have a plan for indoor dining. We have a plan for churches. So, that's what we're trying to do. But, you know, officially, and we're not going to arrest anybody, we're just going to say, if you're opening, you're doing it at your own risk. You know, it's not our intention. We got a lot of work to do, but we want to have a plan in the next seven or eight days to say unequivocally, this is what we're going to do. And if that, you know, makes sense, we're going to have.
It's just, you know, some of the businesses who are following the rules, it's hurting them when you have some that are not, and it's not only hurting them, it's hurting the constituents.
If with Mike or any of our staff, if that's an issue, we'll address that, because officially, they're not supposed to be open. If they're closed for being non, you know, essential business, they need to still be closed. We've not unhooked that component yet.
I think we need to make that more known, what the rules are right now. And also, what's flying around is, oh, I heard we can reopen Monday, or, you know what I mean? So, is it two weeks that we've extended this?
Well, if they heard that on, they heard that on Facebook, that's a lot of solid data comes out of Facebook.
Exactly, yeah. But everyone runs with it, that's the problem.
Well, yeah. Well, I mean, it's an excuse, somebody told me. Well, who told you?
Exactly.
Well, basically, let me restate, you know, we're still under the order for things, the city Biloxi ordinance that you passed, we're still there. We'll ask again, sort of, the, to what makes sense and what we can do to loosen up things from the governor's standpoint. That's what Georgia's trying to get at. We're going to do that, and we're doing that every day. We're going to be meeting with folks. We've met at least four or five different industries so far in bouncing these things around about what's reasonable. You know, we're using the guidelines that the governor has, but also the president's guidelines on what you should do. And just do the common sense things, you know, wash your hands, wash your equipment, stay away, you know, be sure that none of your employees come with, you know, symptoms. And, you know, the restaurants had a number of good, you know, thoughts about that, what they were going to do, whether it's gloves or no gloves, and, you know, the screens and what works for them. So, we're trying to aggregate all what we've heard and put it into something that everyone's comfortable with, so we can, you know, do the hotel thing, do the, you know, the things that we wanted to do to get back to some semblance of normalcy.
Councilman Glavin.
Yeah, so earlier, we were, and the chart shows the new cases. Are we tracking the hospitalizations?
We are.
Tracking that number and where that trend is going?
Yeah, we have, I don't know, Cecilia, camera person is on, she can't talk because she's got that thing around her face.
Yeah.
But anyway, I think no hospitalizations at merit, right?
No, Mayor. We have three, I think, that.
Singing.
One, and I think two.
That's, that's good news, and another big piece of good news is New Orleans reported zero deaths yesterday, zero. And, you know, for a big metropolitan area that's been impacted, that's, that's good news as well.
Does anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
I just want to touch on it, and you mentioned, Robert, about the testing and the cycles. And I think a lot of this is about the testing cycles that they have out there. When they're out there doing the pop-up clinics and different things, the days are spread apart, and so you're going to get those zero days when people are not being tested. And the biggest, the key to this, it's just like the mayor was talking about, you know, testing people, and tests are not readily available for everyone. And if you don't have a symptom, symptom, people, they're not going to test you. There's a, was a young man at my church who I found out that tested positive. No signs, no symptoms, no nothing, and I think it was job-related, and this was last week. So, it's all about the testing and the testing cycle when people are going to find out. So, I think it's smart to get the, get the city going smartly, do it the right way, and to me, the first or the 15th. We should open up our city on the first or the 15th of whatever date we decide, but it should be done in unison with the governor all the way down. And we need, and Councilmember Newman talked about getting the word out. We need to echo exactly what the governor's saying, because people are taking things and they're running with it. And if we don't echo the same message, we're going to get it confused, and people are going to, we're going to have those renegades out there.
Right.
That concludes my comment.
I have one question. There's nothing that we have in place outside of the curfew that is in excess of what the governor has in place, correct?
No, not, nothing more restrictive.
Okay, that was, that was, so there's no businesses that are closed that we could take off that the governor would allow to be? Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you. Do we have any departmental reports?
No departmental reports.
Oscar Rendes sent in a report.
She sent it, she sent it on the phone.
By email? All right, we'll move on to council reports. First, we'll start with, is that Dr. Tizell? I can't tell.
Who that? Who that?
Ready for surgery.
Councilman Tizell?
Yeah, I think the mayor's checking in to see. My big question is, who's going to do the contact tracing?
That's the.
And, right, Speaker of the House Gunn puts out a report every day, a daily report, and I sent his office an email, and they said, check with the Mississippi Department of Health, and I think, Mayor, you have a call into them already. So, that's all. I'd be curious to see who exactly secures these tracers, who pays these tracers, and under whose direction do they serve. I don't think it's going to be the city. I don't know if it's going to be the county, maybe the state, I don't know.
Right now, my contact at the State Health Department is Jim Craig, and he's the point man for the health to the governor. So, whatever's being considered, we're going to ask a lot of questions. You know, what is the process of contact tracing? How can we help? How can we do some things proactively to ensure there's a rapid response to hotspots that break out, so we can pull them out of the mix?
Exactly. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Councilman Tizell, Councilwoman, Ms. Newman?
Also, a big concern I keep hearing is about the homeless and how they're having these, you know, their health concerns about the homeless, and they're walking around, and they're walking into businesses when you're only supposed to have, you know, a couple handful of people in at a time, and they're just barging in, and they're not taking in the social distancing. I mean, we have all these issues. I don't know what the solution is.
Well, I have a solution, but it's sarcastic, so I don't want to do that right now.
Exactly, we can't be sarcastic.
But it is a problem, and you can look at every CTA bus stop, you can see it almost every, under any exterior, it's there, you know, and we want to address it. We want to do the right thing. There's some solutions, but, you know.
But they're definitely multiplied and multiplied.
Now, they have. Now, you can ask Chief Miller, I was coming over, coming back from Utility Authority meeting the other day, and a guy with a grocery cart is in the South Mountain Lane shoulder coming to Biloxi. At the top of the bridge, almost knocked him into the back bay. So, they are coming to Biloxi for whatever reason. He's got his grocery cart coming over the top of I-110 Bridge, going head and south. And, you know, we did, I think, intercept him. I don't know, I said, really wanted to do it, tell him to turn his grocery cart back and walk from where he came. But I don't want to be sarcastic, but it's troubling to me, it's troubling to us, troubling to everybody that's in business.
Exactly.
That 99 and 1%, definitely the 1%.
And I don't know what to say, because businesses are hurting right now anyway, and then leases are coming up, so, and they don't.
I understand.
They're wanting to move out of Biloxi because of the homeless issue, and we don't know what to do.
Well, you know, they're going to move to, anyway, I don't want to get there, but there is an issue.
It's an issue.
We recognize it's been an issue, and it got, it got more since this thing's happened.
Definitely, yes. So, I just wanted to raise awareness to that, and I don't know what the solution exactly is, but.
Well, I'm talking to the camera right now. There is a solution, and, you know, I don't want to be callous, but, you know, people had enough of that, when we got home troubles, and, you know, we want to help the people who need to be helped, but it comes, you know, it's a time, you know, and it's wearing on a lot of folks.
And when we get past the COVID, have we thought about putting them to work in the city?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway.
Wait, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Tizell.
On my way to the meeting, they had all the benches filled up again, 14 garbage bags, filled everywhere, same with the thing. They always sit on all the benches, so nobody can use anything, and it's not right.
No, it's not right.
Not right for the citizens, so anytime, you go ride down there right now, they got them all occupied.
Yeah.
You know, dicks are brought up, and I mean, it's true. You walk down Hot Avenue, anybody walking down Hot Avenue, they are, got all their bags, got their grocery cart, picking up half the street. Walking the middle street, now they're so very, so they don't care. Nobody's seen the do anything.
Some issues, some issues.
Everybody gets upset about that.
Well, everybody's upset, and we're, they're no more.
Buy by roost, they don't.
You know, you can't take them to jail, they won't go to jail, we can't bring them to jail, even if they do threaten you. And people, you know, at least four incidents, I've been in, you know, in, I'll say in conversation with some, but, you know, it's a good thing we're on TV now, because I mean, I could tell you what I really feel and what you really feel. And, you know, I don't want to put us in jeopardy, you know, and get tagged about, you know, the things that should be done, but, you know, there, there are parts and bits and pieces that you just can't throw it all at one deal. But, you know, there are some that certainly know the game and know the buttons to push, and I'm just telling, you know, that I'm upset with it, and if people, you know, life is tough enough when you want to do the right thing, and obviously, they know that, you know, what they're doing. Well, I mean, that, if they're aggressive, if you feel, let me say this, and the lawyer up there was going to tell you, if you don't, you know, if you threaten somebody by hand or by thought, you know, that's, that's a problem, isn't it?
Well, I don't think you can threaten someone by thought.
Or by action.
Trust me, there's plenty of times I've threatened people by thought.
Well, not thoughts, but I'm saying by threatening mannerisms or.
If you put anyone in the fear of bodily harm or danger.
That's it.
Correct.
Well, I mean.
But that's, that's.
That's what I'm talking about.
Correct.
Wait a minute, I wasn't finished.
Oh, okay. Please continue your council report.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'll go back to one thing, both of you. You cannot wait much longer to open up the city. You wait a week, you lose a month. Wherever you start, you're going to have a little problem, you got to adjust it. Waiting forever is not the answer.
We're not waiting forever.
It's done. I mean, you can't wait tomorrow and be no different than Friday. Friday being a little different than Monday. You're going to have the same problem when you first open. It's just time.
Let me say, the people in the retail sector, strong folks, don't rush into anything just when you feel like you got it right and then pull the trigger. I don't feel we can, and I intended to do this thing by Friday, by the first. I don't think it's doable. Now sometime next, the following week, because, you know, how long it's going to take for us to get together and do these things that we, as a plan. But there's about five different components of the plan so we can turn the, the light switch or dimmer switch up a little bit. Next week is, would be a preferable, a real, a realizable target. Sometime, I don't know whether it's Monday of next week or Friday of next week, but it's certainly, you know, before the 15th.
Well, I mean, there's no right time and no wrong time, it's just time. It's just time to do it. And you don't need to wait a week.
I'm not waiting a week without cause, yeah.
If people ready to go back to doing something, people want to go back to work. I mean, I taught, I met with a guy last night with the Billfish Trimmer from Pensacola. They got 80 boats coming here June the 1st, you know? So I hope they have the hotels, somebody open. They kind of, they don't come here fishing. If you remember last year, the storm destroyed most of it. So these people already paid from last year, they just carried the money over. So they're ready to come here. Last year they had 120 something boats, these people want to come in and spend some money in this town. This town needs to be open. It's, it's just time, I'm telling you. It's ready, people ready and I'm telling you, we can't be the last town to open.
Preaching to the choir. The actions we're taking is so we're not the last, we're going to be the first. And that's the, that's the whole idea, but not just first and just roll the dice. I'm not willing to roll the dice.
I mean, you wait for all the experts, they'll let you open in August because they're not involved with the taxes and the people. They just worry about the, what's happening with the disease. Those things happen constantly, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, I, I just have a few things, uh, I want to get this out of the way and, uh, some issues in my ward. Uh, I know I turned in a, a dead tree situation. Uh, the actual street is Royal, Royal Street, uh, and it goes behind where the pump station is or lift station is. But I, I didn't know if they, if, when that was turned in, if Public Works had the right area to drive by and look at it.
That's not the tree that fell on from the school property?
No, that's a, it's a whole different area. Uh, that's a whole different, uh, situation. Um, but it, it looks like it's on the easement by the lift station and if we could remove it, it probably would protect the fence and, and the lift station a little bit. Um, just, just a heads up, Taylor Oaks, uh, is putting together a, a request, I think it's going to go through a letter through their HOA and then I'll turn it in. They're, they're looking, uh, at some speed deterrents and I told them some of the steps they could take before we get to any kind of, uh, asset that we're going to try to place on the road or, or things like that. Uh, also in Sherwood Trailer Park, it's been ongoing probably two or three years, but they, they are requesting if we could look at adding a few lights in that intersection that's becoming a little bit more, uh, traffic coming up and down that road. And when you exit, uh, the Sherwood Trailer Park, it's kind of dark at night and I think there's been some near misses. And they've, they've just requested for us to take a look at it if we could install a light or two in, in that ingress and egress area in, in and out of the park, um, area. On, um, all these comments about opening up and everything, again, Mayor, thanks for being transparent, uh, the, the daily updates are outstanding. I hear a lot of good things about that and I appreciate the invites, uh, every once in a while to attend some of the meetings and meeting with the different sectors of the, uh, economy here and businesses, that, that's a smart thing to do because I'll tell you what, they are, they have thought about this for over a month, almost six weeks on how they can be safe and they're probably, they have measures that they're putting together that are probably more stringent than the governor would put on them if he was to open up or if we were to put some, uh, uh, requirements. Uh, they were looking at all kinds of things, temperature checks, mask, all those normal things, uh, it's going to take a little bit to educate them on what this, uh, contact tracing is. They're going to have to get their hands wrapped around that, but I, I don't think that's a big mountain to climb. I, I think that's a necessary thing in order for us to feel confident in saying, hey, we're open for business. Uh, but I, I know at our company, we have a 17-page document of this is how we're going to reopen, you know, from spacing to limiting people on the elevators and on, I mean, just on and on and on. I mean, we're talking about temperature checks for guests, not just employees, um, and those types of things to make sure that we're safe. And, you know, as we understand how safe we are, uh, each day, then I guess we can relax some of those requirements once we're confident that we're not putting people at risk. So, um, I do agree with, uh, Councilman Lawrence, the sooner the better, but I mean, I, you know, there's some things that we got to be careful, you know, that we don't take, take a big hit and all of a sudden people are looking at us. So we err on the side of caution. Hindsight's 2020, you know, but I, I, I think waiting, if we're, we're talking a few days, you know, to make sure we got it right, I think that's worth it. And, um, but I think we only have days, I don't think we have weeks or months to delay us getting open, uh, any, any, uh, any more longer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Chair recognizes Felix Gines.
Okay, yeah, I have a few things and, um, just to echo what everyone else is saying. I think we're doing a great job being smart about opening up the city. Um, the main thing, as I said before, is we all sing the same song. We just probably need to sing it a little bit louder. Um, but speaking of, uh, opening up the city, we still have work in the city that still needs to be done and we have some contracts that are out there. And speaking of the contracts, of course, I'm going back to beating the same old drum, um, with Oscar Renda. I think, um, they got more than enough opportunity to bring in more workers and get this work completed. Um, I think we need to go ahead and press the pedal a little bit harder. People are out of the way, less people are driving, uh, the contract is still the same and they can, uh, uh, amp up a little bit more. Um, I'm still under the impression that we've asked Oscar Renda to start clearing out the old Lee Street Baseball Stadium. I think, um, uh, I mentioned something about them cleaning up that area by October or toward the end of the year, um, in hopes of continuing to move our city forward. Uh, we, we still have kids out there that have things that, you know, that doesn't have a place to go, playground or what have you. And, uh, we still want to look at that facility over there. So the end of October, November, the end of the year of getting us, asking Oscar Renda to start cleaning up, you know? I'm sure, uh, coming this year, we have 15 years removed from Katrina and from this project, we're probably, uh, eight, nine years from this project and that's probably a little too long. So, uh, we need to start putting the pedal to the metal and, uh, asking them to ship up, shape up or ship out. So it's time for them to start shipping a little bit because we're ready to get our, get, uh, when, when everything opens back up, you know, everybody will be, be able to move except one community and it's because of a holdup. And we can't blame this on the pandemic. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Chair recognizes Councilman Barrett.
Um, only thing, I'll echo what Kenny in Georgia said, I think that we do need to open as soon as possible, but am I correct in thinking that we can't open anything until the governor releases the restrictions? So even if we say we're ready to go, the governor's restrictions are still in place. So we don't have the authority, the only thing we have the authority to do, uh, that we have right now in place is remove our curfew. Outside of that, we can't really do anything else, is that correct?
That's pretty much right, you know, that, uh, and I, you know, once we do it, I don't want to do it piecemeal, you know, we, you know, I wouldn't say remove the curfew and not just only, but you know, but that's in fact right. We'll be asking for what we can do even before he says do it and we need permission from him. This is our plan, this is how we want to do everything. And hopefully we'll have enough sectors and enough types of businesses and enough individual plans by industry to move forward. And I think that gives us more standing with him, say, this is our plan, Governor, can we go forward?
Yeah, okay. That was, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Newman, I think you had a follow-up.
Yeah, I just wanted to give it a shout out and thank, uh, Biloxi Main Street for including us in their downtown art project with the mural on our wall with jacked up coffee bar, Southern Bound Bookshop and fire basket. We're so excited, it's not done yet, but please come out and show support, so we're so excited. Just wanted to thank Biloxi Main Street.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Newman. I have a, a very brief council report. We'll begin with a couple requests. Uh, the chief of police and fire are not here, can we get an update and, and, uh, some information on where we trend with calls? I know we had, we had, since this started historically over the past four weeks or so, we've trended down at about 52% less calls, I think.
No, not less calls, but crown, I think. But yeah, the calls for service are down again this week, I think, uh, so I mean, we're at least, you know, it used to be 2,200, not, uh, Beach Patrol or not Business Patrol, but I think we were down in, in the thousand range or something like that, what was that, Mike? I can't remember exactly what it was. But it's down, it's about half, half speed, half steam.
Thank you. Would you have him provide us with those numbers? Thank you.
We, we get that report every Monday morning for directors meeting.
Will you shoot that over to me?
I'll, I'll, I'll forward that to the council.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Rob, can I ask Kenny a question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask Kenny a question? It's about the, are y'all still planning on opening May the 1st?
Yeah, let me, let me just update what happened. So, uh, I know last, uh, council meeting, I said that we were going to open White House on May 1st and Margaritaville on May 1st. Uh, that Friday after our Tuesday meeting, the governor came out talking about, um, he still wasn't comfortable with allowing businesses to open, uh, particularly casinos and entertainment, uh, areas, which Margaritaville has a large 55,000 square foot of, uh, arcade. So, uh, we delayed it for one week at Margaritaville. We're planning to open next week. We're hopeful to hear some good news from the governor or from, you know, from the powers that be on what's going to be happening with businesses so we can open without any problems.
What about the hotel?
We felt that because the gaming or the arcade space, uh, the 55,000 square foot of arcade space is, uh, very important to the guests that come and visit our property, uh, that it was important that we open a portion of that up and because it looks like we're still restrictive on opening that up, we delayed it one week, hoping to hear some better news.
They're going to do it all at one time?
Correct.
Thank you, um, and I'll continue with my council report. Uh, Ms. Labata, if you could give me an update on where we are with those contracts for resurfacing and paving? I know right now, I, you can give it to me later, you don't, just provide it to me, um, if you would. It, this may sound like a complaint, but it's definitely not. When people are at home doing nothing, they have nothing better to do than call me and find out what's going on with their roads and ditches. So I'd appreciate an update so I can forward the information to the constituents of, of Ward 4. Excuse me. And lastly, um, I, I agree with the council that it's time to reopen and I, I know you're diligently working towards a way to resolve this, this shutdown, but I think that we've seen in the news, uh, you know, a teenager hanging himself and a couple teenagers in the street shooting while those weren't in Biloxi, we're beginning to see some of that civil unrest and, and, and some points of diminishing return where there's less value for being shut down than there, than there is benefit. And so that's just something that I want to raise, um, attention to is that, you know, your grandmother, your mother or whoever in your life that gave you good advice always told you that the idle hands do the work of the devil. And we have a lot of idle hands and, uh, I think it's time to give them something to do. So I agree with you, George, and, and even, even Felix, but we do have to do this precautionarily. Um, that concludes my report. We'll move on to the, uh, well, let me go back to what I did last time and I asked if we had any, any contact from citizens because typically right now we'd be doing the public agenda and addressing citizen comments. Did you receive anything that needs to be broadcast or project, or received any, any concerns from the residents that would be fitting for public comments that we should, we should state publicly?
Do we have any requests or information from the public or the council? I'm not aware of that.
No, I was just checking.
If, if the public is asked for, we usually supply what we know right then and there. I don't think there's anything that they would do as a, uh, part of this public, uh, address. I have to hurry.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
Any questions for, on, on the website, on the Facebook about the city council meeting?
No, we, we don't have the, the board, we can see off the mission, but there's a whole bunch of information out there that's available to people for the convenience of the calls for service. And we got every call for service, police, for fire, for building, for this, there's a lot of stuff out there, we need a lot of people to listen to that. So that, we haven't received any. We think we're a factor in the city.
And that's, and so public comments, when people come in, they usually give us suggestions or they make us aware of things that they want the board or the council to be aware of. And if we haven't received any of those requests, that's fine, but I think now would be the fitting time. And again, like I told the people at home last week, go to the website and they'll find all of our contact information and feel free to send me an email or the rest of the council members an email or call us, cell phones listed as well. Um, we'll move on to the consent, the policy agenda. There is nothing listed under the policy agenda for today, so that'll bring us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Go move, second.
I've got a movement by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Felix Gines. Any questions, George Lawrence, about the consent agenda?
If you just, if you want to, uh, uh, service, we're not moving on out. Yeah, we could have, uh, uh.
What, Councilman?
Councilman Lawrence, would you turn your mic on?
Councilman Lawrence is asking us about his, uh, the additional items, 5L and 5M, which are re, 5L, re, uh, sis, uh, rescends an earlier resolution, 23920 and 5M, then replaces that with a new one. And the, the embarrassing story that goes with that is that if you have a $12 million project and the city has to pay 20%, 20% of 12 million is not 2 million. It actually is 2.4 million. So our math has been wrong.
Those were the additions to the agenda today.
And those were the additions this morning. That's, that's our bill grant, which is the, uh, the grant that we're requesting, that we requested last year, didn't receive, requesting again this year to build the Pops Ferry Extension. It's a $12 million project. Our share of that $12 million project is not as earlier noted, 2 million, it's actually 2.4 million.
Does that resolve your inquiries?
That's what we're getting to. I know it's 2.4.
Bad math.
That's all, I just wanted.
Councilmen Gines, do you have any questions on the consent agenda? No? Councilman, Councilwoman Newman? Questions on the consent agenda? Councilman Tisdale?
No.
Glavine? Barrett? None? With this all, um, I'll call for the question then. All in favor of the consent agenda? Please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion's carried unanimously. Do we have any dissension on any of the issues on the consent agenda, any of the items? There being none, we'll move on to code enforcement hearings.
Of which there are none.
There are none there either. Let's address routine agenda. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
Go move.
Moved by Paul Tisdale and seconded by Felix Gines. I'll begin discussion with Ward 1, Councilman.
Yeah, we did a 1, 1.4 million left, what, what'd you do this week?
1.5 million last week. So it's down.
Have you, what'd you receive last week? Didn't you said you received?
1.5.
You received that?
Yes.
And what do you have going now?
211.
It's 211. Okay, we still up to date, right? Both of you?
60 days ahead.
We, uh, three months? Four months?
To keep those cards and letters, Ron.
As long as we're here, that's a good thing. Thank you. That's all.
Councilpersons, are there any other questions on the routine agenda? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously and before we get a motion to adjourn, um, I would like to apologize, I could not make this the fastest council meeting in history, which was the goal at the beginning, um, given the short agenda, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Moved by Paul Tisdale, seconded by.
I, I do have one request, um, and Councilman Lawrence and I discussed it at our last meeting, if we could close this meeting in, uh, memory of, uh, Dan Schroder.
Councilman Glavine, um, your request is heard. Councilman Tisdale, the board would request that you withdraw your motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll do that.
The motion to adjourn is withdrawn by Councilman Tisdale. Motion is made by Councilman Glavine to end in the name of Dan, to conclude this, this meeting in the name of Dan Schroder.
Bill.
And motion is seconded by George Lawrence. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.
Thank you. All right, Mayor.
Motion by, uh, Kenny, seconded by Lawrence.